To stand for the pledge allegiance and we'll start this meeting. Good morning and welcome to our May 17, 2022 commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter. If you plan on speaking during public comment, if you would sign in and put your address on our paper, it makes it easier for a recorder. There's such a list here. We have elections going on next door, so please use the other door and be quiet in the hallways. And is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? I don't think so. Okay. With that, we'll go on to routine business. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is a consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Rule call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hamburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now is the opportunity for public comment if anyone wants to speak on something that is not on today's agenda. No one's moving. Okay. We'll move on to regular business. Item number one, or excuse me, item number 10 is request authorization to use excess county fire protection funds to replace, to repair the rural fire department pager system. Jason, good morning.
Jason Dearman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. Just up here today, we had some problems with the paging system that Rural Fire uses. This is a software issue, and unfortunately it costs quite a bit of money, but it's necessary for them to get their calls. So we're looking to transfer some money out of their fire fund and kind of pay the bill and get the, get the system back up and running.
Any questions?
How much money?
It's around 15 grand.
15 grand?
$15,375.
That's not that much money.
Well, considering the age of the, the system, it's, it's, and it's just computer software. It's not, it's, it seems to me like a lot of money, but it's necessary.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. I think he's giving you a hard time.
I know. It happens every time I'm up here.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is consider a request for Minnehaha County Emergency Management to purchase radio equipment for rural fire departments.
As you know, we've had a couple informational meetings on this with Rural Fire, and this came to fruition here to, just to get to that next step of possibly purchasing radios. So I'm going to have the Rural Fire Chiefs President, Mike Harstead, come up, and he can answer any questions that you may have. And then we have Beaman here from the Auditor's Office if you have questions about how the funding works or where it'll go.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Harstead, President, Minnehaha County Fire Chiefs Association. Got representatives here this morning from Baltic, Brandon, Colton Crooks, Del Rapids, Lyons, and Brenner. Talked a few different times in the last six months about our, our radio situation, and I think nothing brings that to light more than our, our fun little storm we had on Thursday. We had a fatality just outside of Colton. We had another very serious injury inside at Colton. We had semis blocking eastbound traffic on I-90. We had a semi blocking southbound traffic on I-29. In total, I had, had Metro look this up this morning. In the time between 4:00 PM on Thursday through noon on Friday, just to the fireboard, there was 1,039 calls for help. In that five o'clock hour when the storm really hit, there was 300 in one hour. All the departments were very taxed. I want to call out just some, just the amount of cooperation between the fire departments, the ambulance groups, the sheriff's office, the highway patrol, DOT, emergency management, Metro Communications was absolutely unbelievable. You guys may not know, but Metro was experiencing an extremely high call volume, and with that wind, they lost some equipment as well. So there were some interruptions in the system. Those guys answered hundreds and hundreds of calls in a very, very short amount of time and were just absolute rock stars. So all of the staff at Metro Communications deserves our praise. Just to give you some info on the radio purchases, we are still in need of about 200 radios. That's what the amount there represents. Between the departments that, that make up this request, we're talking all the volunteer fire department agencies along with the three volunteer ambulance groups. We average between those units needing about 40 radios per department, per agency. 200 averages out to about 13 needed radios per agency, which means we've replaced about 70% of the needed equipment. And we've done that from a number of different sources. FEMA Fire Act grants, we've applied for them as individual departments. We've also applied for them regionally as a group. State Homeland Security funding, we've put in requests over the last four years with state land, homeland security. Most of the time, we get something. They've never, they've never been great about granting our full request, but we've, we've been able to chip away at it. There's a state forestry grant program that we use as well. That's a 50/50 matching program with a cap of $5,000. So when you're talking about $4,000 radios, it doesn't go very far, but it's something. There's also several community grants that we've used out there. The USDA offers low interest loans. Couple departments have utilized that. Alliance Communications and their Keep the Change Grant Program, Sioux Falls Community Foundation, and most of our departments, all of our departments have used budgeted funds, whether that comes from the fire tax that the county collects for us or the pancake feeds that we put on. We've attacked this from basically every angle that we know how, because we know that as, as a group goes, this is the largest single expenditure that we've faced as long as I've been around. So with that, I've, I've thrown, the last couple of times I've been here, we've talked about some different numbers, and with the, with the inflation and everything else that we're seeing right now, just the six-month overprice increase on these radios, the one drawback that we have, Motorola provides the only radio that we can use on the state radio system currently. So we don't have a lot of choice for shopping around. But just in a, in a six-month time period, the cost of the radios has gone up about 32%. So when we look at what we've done so far, we, we're very blessed to have been able to get ahead of this and have been working on it for the last few years. But right now, those 200 radios reflect the price that you see up there, about $825,000. So we're asking for any and all assistance we can get to get this project done. So I'd gladly take any questions you have.
Commissioner Berth.
Couple of questions. Mike, so who locked in this monopoly contract for Motorola?
I, I don't know. When we, when we first started the system about 18 years ago, the state provided us radios when we got on that, and they were provided by a company called EF Johnson. They have since gone out of business, and the only radio manufacturer out there, there's, there's a lot of different places we can get radios from, but the only ones that work on the, the trunked system that the state built is Motorola.
Commissioner Benega.
Mike, how many radios do they have in stock? Are you going to be able to get those as quickly as you need them?
We don't know. I, I've had, the last round of Homeland Security funding that we received, we got official award of it back in October. I personally, Crooks Fire Department got radios on that grant. I put in a request then and ordered radios then. I still don't have them. So that's seven months. Sioux Falls Two Way has been a good partner in this, but they, they don't have an answer for that either. It's, again, supply chain issue with chips and everything else that build these things anymore. The, the radios that we use are, are not simple devices. They're basically a computer on our hip, and the chip shortages that we've seen and everything else have affected that.
The other question, I'm not sure that you have an answer, because I don't think any of us got quite the answer we were looking for, but when the state got all of their funding, there was conversation with the ARPA funding to be able to participate with some of the support that they could possibly give to local government. Have you heard anything about that?
To, to my knowledge, anything that was coming that way was redirected so far.
I knew the answer, but...
We have, we have helped sponsor legislation the last three years to help with funding, because this, this isn't just a Minnehaha County problem. This is, this is everywhere. And, you know, like I said, when, when Governor Janklow put that radio system in place and got the funding for it, there, there wasn't a lot of long-range thinking. And now here we sit, and the last four years, in fact, there's been legislation introduced, and it's, it's been thrown out every year. So we've, not for lack of trying.
Oh, I know you've tried. Do you still have some communication issues between locations with your radios?
Absolutely. You get into the, the northwest part of the county, up around between Lyons and Colton, and northwest of Colton even. We've got some, we've got some gaps there. You get out west towards Humboldt, there's some issues. It's a, it's, it's an ongoing thing. We're working on a separate program to help fund a couple of more towers and some additional equipment in the next couple of years to enhance that. But, you know, it's one of those things. We've, the departments that are here can attest to. We've, we've learned to live with it the last 15 years that we've been utilizing it. It hasn't, it hasn't gotten a lot better. It works, but we, we've had to kind of adapt to the deficiencies of it.
So this radio purchase isn't going to solve that issue?
This is, this is replacing existing equipment only.
Right. The communication piece is still connected to the towers?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. So Mike, you said that you guys have already placed about 70% of the radios?
Yes.
So has every fire department participated in, in supplying some for their community?
Yes.
Or everyone has bought some?
Yep.
And then, I'm not sure if this is a question for Susan, possibly. I think that we have been talking with the sheriff's group about doing some tower improvements out of ARPA funds. And so Joe, can you speak to that? Or Sue, I'm not sure who speaks to it, but could somebody please speak to that? Because I think we're already looking at putting in, I want to say a boatload, but a lot of money.
Yes, you're exactly right. And that's one thing that...
And that hasn't been approved yet either, but let's talk about it, because this is...
Working on a request, Joe Bosman with Sheriff's Office, working on a proposal request for the tower infrastructure to be upgraded. The equipment is one component of it, but again, you need the infrastructure, or else you get these nice radios and you push the button, and they just bonk and don't work. So we want, the next component would be possibly using ARPA funds to increase the tower coverage in those areas. He was talking about in that northern, western, and one in the eastern part of Minnehaha County. That would help tremendously, I think, for a lot of the issues that would be the subsequent after the new radios come in.
Joe, do you know how much money we had been requested? Because I, I think we kind of like had a small line item that we were looking at.
Rough placeholder, I think at the time, was requested 2.5 to 3 million. And that would be the, an additional...
Right.
...towers and the generators that have to go to run them, and the backups and the lines to them and all that stuff.
Okay. And then I know the state said that they have put some money into these towers too. Have, do you know, Joe or Mike, do you know if they put any money into Minnehaha County as to replacement of towers and replacement of radios?
They did not. I think there was some Senate bills or House bills that were appropriations committed to White River or some other tower areas that they specifically named only for those infrastructures to be upgraded. Something that we are going to be working with, with our talk, is maybe the state can be a partner in doing some part of the towers. These towers require, like I said, a generator. All the electrical needs to be housed in like a concrete building next to the tower. Maybe the state can be a partner in taking some parts in it, because they would benefit from it. We have the Highway Patrol, we have the state DOT on, running on the interstates that use this radio system as well. So they would see the improvement too.
Commissioner?
I have one less question for you, Mike. If they, if we give you the support that you need, are we going to be able to guarantee that we get those at that price if we don't know when we're going to get them? I mean, we could see a significant change.
The, the, what I've gotten from Sioux Falls Two Way is that the quote that they gave me that they updated, "It's good for 60 days, and we can lock the price in when we order them."
Okay, good.
I'm just wondering if you feel like you've exhausted all possibilities of grants and stuff. I mean, as, you know, as Joe said, we're looking right now at 2.5 to 3 million dollars in tower upgrades, and now we're looking for another 825,000. You know, the county has a lot of places to put money. Obviously, this is a high priority, because if we can't use our radios, we have a problem for a lot of reasons. But do you feel like you've exhausted all possibilities of grant options to help us out?
I don't know that I would say exhausted. There, there are still grant opportunities out there, ongoing, specifically like the state homeland security funding. I believe that we'll be able to get some additional help there. But one of the things that this has taken over the last three years is basically we've shifted all of our requests to the radios that we've been getting homeland security funding for. That has also helped fund EMS equipment, other equipment that we need. So we've kind of shifted our focus completely onto the radio system. So that, those dollars will continue to be there, but we're, we're, I don't want to get to the point where we're neglecting other needs as well. So exhausted is probably not the right word, but we have, we have actively sought out just about every place we can think of to come up with funding, either through a community source, statewide, federal, et cetera.
Okay. Commissioner Berth?
So obviously, you guys are one of the three legs of the tripod of public safety, fire, ambulance, police. And, you know, we sure do appreciate you guys. Obviously, volunteers are so important, because we could never afford professional firefighters of the quality we have as volunteers. But I would say also that I'd like a list of legislators that don't support our fire departments. Just let me know. I'll be retired, but I'll, I'll work on the list. The other thing I would say, and I was going to mention this later, is that in today's bills, we made a partial distribution of the fire fund, funds to all 13 of our fire districts, which was in excess of $320,000. So thank you guys for what you do, and I'll see you at the pancake dinner.
I think we should hear from Susan too, or at least the Auditor's Office. Somebody goes talk about, a little bit about our ARPA funds and where we're at. So thanks, Mike. You might get called back. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beaman at the Auditor's Office. As we've kind of stated before, the ARPA funding, US Treasury's final rule enumerated emergency response equipment as an eligible use. So if it's your decision to, if you approve this request, ARPA funding would be available. We just have to follow the procurement requirements set forth within uniform guidance, as well as just go through the requirements of the ARPA funding that we would handle within the Auditor's Office in conjunction with, with emergency management and state's attorney.
Okay. Thanks, Susan. Commissioner Benega.
I would make a motion to re, support the 200 radio purchase for the county emergency management system for 800, I thought it was 826, not 825, or whatever.
825-988-76, and it's 204 radios are on their list.
That's exactly what I said.
Good. I just want to make sure we don't leave four radios off the list. I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments? Are you comfortable without having two other commissioners here for any questions or debate?
I am.
We'll have three votes, I hope, so those two don't count.
Gee, if they're not going to be here, let's spend some more money, huh? Okay. I have a motion and a second to support the request for emergency management for purchase of radio equipment. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You guys owe us. No, you don't. I want to thank you so much for all the work you did. I'm one of the, one commissioner that lives in the rural county, and I was so busy, I wasn't watching the radio or the TV or listening to radio or TV or stuff, just cleaning up. And I didn't have structural damage like many of my neighbors did. And driving around Saturday night in the rural county, it's devastating. It's incredibly sad. In the rural county, I don't think we always get the coverage like the city of Sioux Falls does, because everybody's here. But when you see pictures, picture windows broken out of people, it's the front of houses, roof's gone, building's completely shredded. A friend of mine, their, their building hit their house. I mean, it was just, and I only saw a small portion of where I live. And so I appreciate the work you guys did, because instead of staying home and taking down your own trees, you were out looking at our stuff and looking at my propane tank that was now tipped, and just a lot of things that happened. And so thank you to the ambulance, the fire, the sheriff's department. You guys are out there helping everybody, and we do need you. And sadly, it's a volunteer position, so...
Madam Chair, it's kind of a housekeeping thing, but you guys should get to know that Cindy and I are not running for reelection. Gerald is, and we have three other candidates in the room. We've got Jen, Tom, and Joe. You should get to know them and see how they feel about fire. The other thing I would say is that when there are only three of us, we all have to agree unanimously. It takes three votes to pass anything. So I'm looking forward to not adjourning, because I'll say no.
Thanks for coming, you guys. I appreciate your time, too. So, all right, that...
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number 12, which is consider a motion to approve a resolution relating to fees to be charged for various classifications of liquor licenses.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Yeah, so today, we're here to ask you to adopt the resolution for the number of allowable on-sale and off-sale liquor licenses and the fees to be charged for the various classifications for those licenses. So if you recall, back in August of 2021, the Commission adopted an ordinance establishing the requirement for, requirements, fees, and regulations for issuance of alcohol beverage licenses within Minnehaha County. As part of the ordinance, we agreed that May 5, that we would annually renew that number by the middle of May of each year. So that's why I'm here today. So in August of last year, the Commission adopted the number of allowable on-sale and off-sale liquor licenses at 13. So since then, we've had the 2020 census figures that have been released, and that number also supports 13. Although the county population in total has grown, the population that's outside of all of the city limits remain almost the same, around 16,000 people who live outs, who live in Minnehaha County but outside of the community. So that supports 13 liquor licenses. So when we issue an on-sale liquor license, we currently charge a fee consistent with the fees charged to the nearest municipality for on-sale liquor license. So that's kind of set by state statute. In most cases, with the exceptions of Sioux Falls and Brandon, the fee is for new liquor licenses, and the renewal is about $1,200. The fees for off-sale liquor licenses are set at $1,200 for a new off-sale liquor license and 500 for the renewal, and the maximum, which is the maximum allowable renewal fee. And these fees are consistent with the surrounding market. So that, we do have fees that we charge for various classifications of temporary licenses, not spelled out in state statute. And so the, last year, when we adopted the original resolution, it was asked of us by the Commission to review those fees that aren't set by statute and make sure there's, that maybe they are due for some adjustment considering our actual cost. So we did that this year. We reviewed those fees for the temporary licenses that made, made adjustments. So basically, if we had a, we have, we had three or four that we adjusted. So we have one from a temporary special malt liquor retail license. We're recommending that go up to $50 per day. That's an increase from the previous fee of $25 a day. So when we did this analysis, we, we looked at the cost of the, our, our time and the other departments involved that, and how much, we, you know, we thought it cost with our full cost, which includes, you know, not only benefits and, and wages and other things. So that's how we, we did come up to $50 fee for that. Temporary special on-sale wine retail license, we also recommend goes to $50 per day, up from 25. The temporary special on-sale license may be issued for $50 a day. That remained the same. The temporary special off-sale liquor license for wine dealers licensed, $50. That's an increase from 25. And then publishing fee, we recommend stays the same at $50. So those are, that's our recommendation for the renewal, the, those number of on-sale and off-sale license, and the recommendation for new fees for those temporary license. Just ask your support on those.
Questions on those fee changes?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Berth.
You know, I really appreciate your work on this, and I, I think $50 for a one-day liquor license is, is not enough, honestly. I think that, you know, the work that you guys go through, clearing it with the sheriff and all that stuff, and then we get people that have, you know, 17 in a row or something like that. It just seems like, you know, with the huge cost of alcohol in our community, we ought to recover a little bit more of that wherever we have a chance.
I would say this is not a money-making venture at all for the county, and we are just literally trying to cover our costs. And there's a lot of times, we don't cover our costs. And, but this is to cover the specific costs. It's not like it's covering other things in the county, like, so anyway. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the license fee increases.
You want me to second it?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. We need a rule call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
No.
Hamburger?
Power.
Aye. Motion fails. I would...
Madam Chair, a substitute motion?
You may have a substitute motion.
I'd like to postpone the decision until next week.
I have to ask attorneys, since we just denied it, can we even postpone it?
You'd have to bring a new motion. It's not a substitute motion, first of all. And the motion's already died. So yes, the first question is, is no longer on the table.
What can I do? Because I think when there are five of us, I may find myself again in the minority.
Only because you want the fees to be higher?
Yes.
Okay. So how can we remedy this situation?
Madam Chair, I would just suggest that you ask staff to bring this back at the next meeting for, for another round for consideration.
And would you bring it back when we have all five of us, so we can move forward with this? Can I also ask Commissioner, or Auditor Kite, how long will it take to implement this when we've changed this? Are we kicking the can down the road by having done this?
Well, no, I, I would believe it'd be effective immediately.
Okay.
Right, so that anybody, excuse me, anybody who applies for licenses would be subject to the new fee.
Okay. So as long as they don't apply between now and when we actually increase the fees?
So these are all temporary licenses, right? So they come throughout the year, right? So some will benefit, some will, you know, not.
Okay. So the original motion has failed by a vote of two to three, two to one. Commissioner Berth?
I would make a motion to bring this back next week.
We need to have a motion or not? Okay. She, he said we don't. I apologize. Okay. So we will just have you bring it back.
Okay. The next meeting would be?
The 24th, I believe.
24th, okay.
You can put it on the agenda. So, okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would also like to say that our auditor, Mr. Kite, has done a great job, and, you know, I appreciate him thinking ahead to where these fees have not been increased in historic times.
Correct.
And, you know, that's the kind of thinking we need for someone in your office.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. We will move on to item number 13, which is consider a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license renewal applications.
Yes. Oh, yeah, we're, we have our annual renewal request for the malt beverage and South Dakota farm licenses for 2023. You know, we received those in our Auditor's Office. We submitted, they've all submitted their, their applications. There's no concerns or objections from the state's attorneys, planning and zoning, or sheriff's office. The renewal fee for each of these is $300, of which $150 is remitted back to South Dakota Department Revenue, and the hundred, other, other 150 stays with Minnehaha County. So on the resolution, we list all the renewal entities. So a compliance check will be done. As far as we know, no, none of these entities fail the compliance check, so they're all in compliance. So they're all in compliance. And the deadline to have the applications due to South Dakota Department of Revenue is May twentieth.
Any questions? Is there a motion? Commissioner Barth?
Are these transferable? If, in other words, if I own, let's just, for example, say, the Alibi Lounge, which might be being converted into a dispensary, can I sell my license to somebody else?
I, I believe so. I'm going to defer, no, I'm going to defer to this, to the attorney to-
The, sorry, the firm, I thought we were still talking about the temporary ones. No, the firm life, it could be, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve these listed locations. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen is an agreement with NCIC Inmate Communication Services. Warden Mattson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Warden Mattson from Minnehaha County Jail. Before you is an agreement with NCIC Inmate Communications. It is a vendor that does our inmate phones, visitation, and they will be doing tablets for us.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And I would also make the comment that this is not a money-making venture for us. This is a communication contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number fifteen is transfer of land to the city of Sioux Falls. Mr. Boge, our civil, Chief Civil Deputy, State's Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Eric Boge, State's Attorney's Office. Last fall, the State's Attorney's Office was made aware of a small strip of land adjacent to what would have been Sycamore Avenue and southeastern portion of Sioux Falls. And that had fallen through the cracks. In nineteen fifty, the county purchased that land for highway construction purposes. Plans changed. Interestingly enough, I pulled up some old aerial maps of the city in nineteen sixty-two, the oldest one I could actually find. And it was substantially outside the city at that time. However, as we both are all know, at this point, it's well within the city limits at, at this point. As the city cannot, it's not clear that this land is actually just right of way. We can't certainly vacate land within the city of Sioux Falls, nor can the city vacate land that's not owned by the city. So the only remedy that we have articulated that works for all sides is for us to transfer it to the city, allow the city then to do whatever it wishes to handle that strip of property. If you're aware, this is at the, very near the county line between Lincoln County, Minnehaha County, and Sycamore Avenue. It takes a, an S-curve sort of direction at that point. In preparation or anticipation that you may have some additional questions, not saying that you do, I asked Kurt Pepple, what City Attorney, or City Public Works Office Engineer, to be here this morning. I believe he's in the back. If you have any questions for Kurt, he'd certainly be able to answer those. If not, I've drafted a proposed resolution for you to adopt this morning. So any questions?
Thanks, Eric. Any questions for Eric? Any questions for the city? We made him run all the way over here. Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the transfer of that land to the city.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We have a roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming over. Item number sixteen is a briefing on the moratorium related to the transmission pipeline. Since we only had three commissioners today, we, and this is only a briefing. I didn't pull it from the agenda. There was discussion about possibly doing that just because of gravity of what we were doing. But since it's only a briefing, I asked Tyler just to read the briefing. And we really are not going to have a discussion on it today because there's really no reason to unless we have all five of us here. So, is that okay?
Yeah. Well, so Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. At the May third, 2022 Commission Meeting, the Commission direction was to draft a moratorium on transmission pipelines. The intent of the moratorium is to provide time for staff to research the feasibility of a transmission or pipeline ordinance. So as directed, we've put together a draft moratorium ordinance, which I'll read for you. Temporary ordinance regulating gas or liquid transmission facilities in Minnehaha County. Whereas Minnehaha County has seen an increased interest in the development of pipelines for the transportation of hazardous gases or liquids. And where the Minneh, whereas the Minnehaha County Commission values the safety of the citizens of Minnehaha County. And whereas the Minnehaha County Commission recognizes the need to study best practices and industry standards concerning county regulation of transmission pipelines. And whereas the nineteen ninety revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County does not address transmission pipelines. And whereas South Dakota qualified laws, Title eleven to ten, authorizes the Board of County Commissioners in the interest of public health, safety, and general, general welfare to adopt temporary zoning ordinances for a reasonable period of time in order to study, identify, and consider necessary land use regulations. And now therefore be ordained that the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners hereby authorize a twelve-month moratorium on the issuance of any permits and/or approval of land uses for transmission pipelines. This moratorium shall expire on May seventeenth, 2023, unless otherwise extended.
Thanks, Tyler. Couple more things I want to make you aware of is that the Subbit Carbon Solutions has filed a motion with the PUC to extend the decision deadline to June fifteenth, 2023. That request has not been acted upon yet. The PUC, as of today, has, they have a meeting scheduled on the twenty-fourth. And so I would suggest that we do not revisit this until after the PUC has met on the twenty-fourth. And so we can put it on an agenda after the twenty-fourth because otherwise, we're still not going to have all the correct, all the information that we might possibly need. So I would just ask staff to look at the calendar and figure out where it would fit in. But just, so it's after the twenty-fourth. June twenty-one. Okay. So it will be kicked down to June twenty-one just because of elections and a lot of other things that are going on, budget hearings and stuff. So June twenty-first, we will revisit the moratorium and maybe we'll have some more information by then. So, thanks, Tyler.
Thank you.
All right. With that, this is the opportunity for liaison reports. Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, we haven't been publicly reviewing the bills as carefully as we have in the past. I just want to touch on a couple of, of items. One is, in today's bills, which total five million bucks, I think, five point one five million dollars, there's three point five million, which is license plate fees and the like that have been transferred to the state. So that's not all of our property tax money. That's our, our highway wheel tax or, or vehicle registration money. Interestingly, we also paid ninety-five hundred dollars in, to the state in death fees and sixty-two hundred in birth fees. So as they say, they get you coming and going. And if we had more people being, or less people born and more people staying alive, those taxes could go down. We paid three hundred and thirty-two thousand in, to the library fund. As I commented earlier, three hundred and twenty-one thousand to the fire, to the fire, from the fire fund to our thirteen fire departments. And so when you subtract those large numbers, it's really not that large of a number in our weekly bills.
Thanks, Commissioner Barth. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Any non-actionable commission discussion? None? Okay. I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive, well, to, oh, excuse me, sorry, Carol.
Sorry. I just, if I can take a moment, Carol Mueller, Commission Office, just to summarize upcoming meetings because with elections and budget hearings coming up, we're just a little bit, little bit different on everything for people who are listening, for department heads who may be listening also. So you meet next Tuesday, which is May twenty-fourth. May thirty-first, you will not be meeting because that is the fifth Tuesday of the month, and you do not meet at that particular time. June, June seventh is Election Day. So it'll be busy up here, and you guys traditionally never meet on Election Day. And June fourteenth is budget hearing, which means we bring this down to June twentieth, or June twenty-first for the next meeting, which is the day after Juneteenth. I do want to mention June tenth is canvassing, and that's important. We need to accomplish it at that particular time. So I need three commissioners to be present that day. We'll also do a very abbreviated commission meeting on that day because we want to pay some bills. And we know vendors, it's a little bit longer than usual. We want to respect our vendors, get those bills paid. So we will just do some abbreviated things that day in order to keep the county going.
Basically, hopefully, it will be a consent agenda and we will be done.
That would be nice.
It would be, it would be two meetings. One is the canvassing, which will, that usually takes just a few minutes to do the canvassing. Well, more than a few minutes, but it's a short meeting to do the canvassing. And then we'll read, we'll, we'll adjourn. And then we'll come back in as a county commission and hopefully consent agenda and not much more of anything else. And that is on a Friday. We have not determined a time, I don't think, yet. Right now, it's nine o'clock, but that's subject to change before that time. So when we find out who can actually be here. Okay. So then I would look for a motion, a motion to recess until, for, let's say, ten minutes, so nine fifty, for exec session discussion. Is there a motion to?
That's my motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned for now.